And, good morning, counsel. We are back. And, Madam Clerk, if we could get the most recent motion on the screen again, please. Why is the presenter my guy? While we're waiting, just a moment. And, Mayor Nenshi, you have...
Just to close.
Okay. If we'll... Just wait one moment for the... There it is. So, counsel, if you recall, we have an amendment from Alderman Farrell that is on the floor.
That amendment passed.
And the amendment has passed, and we are on the main motion. Alderman Karah, on the main motion.
As amended.
Thank you, your worship. I think we've had a really good debate on this. And I want to speak to a couple of things, because I think Alderman Pincott sort of framed the proposition that's before us very nicely. Yesterday, in the proposal of the main motion, Mayor Nenshi misspoke, and he said 10% instead of 10 million, and that got me to thinking. Decimation, the term "decimation," I don't know if everyone's aware of where it came from, but when the Roman legions were not performing up to snuff, they would undertake a decimation, and it was literally to kill 1 in 10 soldiers. And the 90% that remained had a fresh outlook on life. And that is a horrible, and brutal, and scary sort of statement. And I bring it up sort of tongue-in-cheek. I bring it up tongue-in-cheek, right? But today, in software development, and I've used this analogy before, when software development runs into a brick wall, they don't throw more money at it. What they've learned to do is actually cut the teams in half, take a fresh look, change the parameters. And I think what we've got before us is we've got a shift in the way we're thinking about things, in terms of, is it... Are we going to throw more money at something, or are we going to throw less money at it? Or are we going to try and find a different and better way to do it? And I'm not saying that we have to manufacture crisis, and crisis does precipitate change, but we have to look at things in a fundamentally different way. And what I'd like to think about this proposed $8 million cut is not that we're just going to go back and bring a couple more line items forward. What I hope we're going to see in this is that we're actually going to go in, dig into how things are done in the back of house, and talk about efficiencies, because I know, just from being a citizen activist, from being a consultant, and I know that my voters... I mean, I was at a community association meeting last night until late. Everyone has stories about real, actual inefficiencies. And we have to balance that with the fact that we do have really qualified professionals working in the city of Calgary, and an amazing sort of, you know, senior management team, really good GMs who are very conscientious and very capable professionals. And it is very conceivable that you can have very competent professionals, very good employees working throughout the organization, and yet you can also have an organizational structure that does not maximize their ability to be professionals. So, what we need to do is we need to... And what this $8 million does is it precipitates a bit of a crisis, a manufactured crisis, but it does so in a way that allows us to control it, because I do believe that we are heading towards a real crisis down the road. I know that cities across North America have hit these crises, where their costs of growth and the way they've grown have put them into corners that it's very difficult to get out of. And while the sun is shining, I think it behooves us to really start making hay. And I think that I will be supporting this with the faith that we can start, in the 2011 cycle, to start doing things differently, better, more efficient, and to set ourselves up for real success as we move into 2012 through 2014. And I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Karah. I have Alderman Keating on the motion as amended.
Thank you, your worship. I hate to admit this two days in a row, but I do agree with Alderman Pincott's comment yesterday, but for vastly different reasons. Maybe you should wait until I'm done. But let me state at the beginning of this that I really dislike statistics, because you can use numbers to prove absolutely anything, depending on how you want to go about it. So, coming back to the comment yesterday that it's just a number, and that's where I agree with Alderman Pincott. It is just a number. But it was just a number last year, and it was just a number the year before. And I think our job here is to make sure that we get that number correctly, and not to accept just another number, but to think differently and deeper. We must come upon a method of behavior in balancing the taxes that our residents, our citizens, pay with the services that are given. I think we've heard through this whole election that we're not there yet, that at some point we will have to work hard on what the balance of taxes and revenues raised to the service given, to make sure that the voters and the citizens are happy, as well as well-serviced. My guess is that we will both... Do both eventually. We will raise taxes, and we will raise services, but at the time, we haven't got that balance. And that's where we go back to a number of other comments over the last four days, where we need to find core services, we need to review these, and eventually bring them both in line, so that all are happy, and we do know exactly where we are. So, we are here today to send a message of willingness to drill deeper and find the resolve to do what has not done for some time: change practices, increase efficiency, and reduce taxes. I would like to share into some numbers, as I realize that the city's budgets does not come from taxes, but there are other revenues. But if you look at it statistically and mathematically, the $8 million we're talking about, just on a $2.5 billion budget, is 0.0032% of the budget. And if you look at it in those statistics, if we can't do that, when can we? If you look at it as a percentage, it is only 0.3%, or 0.03, I believe, of the budget in a different manner. So, in total, or of the taxes and that sort of thing. So, I really think that this is the message we have to send. I will be supporting it, because I think we can certainly find 0.0032% of our budget to show that message to the voters. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Keating, on the motion as amended. Alderman McLeod.
Thank you, your worship. There's so many things I could say to this. Reducing taxes, while important, and keeping taxes in perspective, is not a goal unto itself, or at least it shouldn't be. It's about services that we're providing. Money is a means to an end. I think that if we want to service culture, I'm not sure this is the way we're going to get it. And what this does is it starts taking away additional tools from administration. And we were joking the other day about paperclips, but we could say the same thing about white-out or scissors or anything else. I mean, I've worked in organizations where you cut everything to a point where you start... Paperclips start to become a currency of sorts, and people start hiding them and hoarding them, and people start taking paperclips from other people's desks. And where does a citizen get in all that? I mean, it just starts to become quite absurd. I think that we have cut already... You know, in the Book One, we already took some pretty big hits to the fleet service and other things like that, where we're going to have to make it up down the road. I don't disagree that we need change. I just don't think this is the way to do it, and I don't think, you know, you called it "decimation" or whatever it was. It's like the slap chop thing, you know? Bang, 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 and we'll see what we can cut next. And it's not thoughtful. It's not reasoned. It's not thoughtful. It seems to be random, and I think it's counterproductive. So, I'm not going to support this. I think that what we need to focus on is what services we want to provide, how we can best provide those, and organize ourselves, the administration, in such a way that we can provide those services in a cost-effective, cost-reduced way, and as efficiently as possible. But it is... Money is a means to an end, and if we continue to strive to the bottom, we're all going to end up in a swamp. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman McLeod. On the amendment, sorry, on the motion to amend... As amended, to close, Mayor Nenshi. Oh, Alderman Farrell's just popped up. Alderman Farrell.
Well, thank you. I thought my light was on. Thank you. Well, I think some very good discussion has occurred. I especially want to thank Alderman Pincott for his very good debate yesterday. I think I would much have preferred if, rather than $8 million in cuts, we talked about exactly what I think was intended, which was opportunities for savings and revenue. So, change. Well, it's... I think it's too late. I've already amended it. But it's...
If it's less than three words, I'll take it as granted.
Would you take it as friendly?
Absolutely. Just change the word "cuts" to "efficiency opportunities."
I would then make that amendment, "efficiency opportunities." I think it changes the tone. I should have done it initially.
Is the seconder? Oh, okay. Well, we will say yes.
No, it would be much lower than that. Thank you.
Invisible Alderman Chabot agrees.
That was me you were imitating. So, do we need to vote on that, or...
It's less than three words. I'm prepared to...
It's the opportunities.
I think... All right. Then we'll... It's a friendly amendment. We'll proceed. Thank you. Then I feel better about it. We've been talking a lot about innovation and the ability to do things differently. And that has to... Counsel, I'm... I would appreciate the attention of my colleagues, if I'm going to get up in speed. I think when we're talking about innovation, counsel needs to start. We need to start changing our behavior. When you encourage an innovative culture, you encourage new ideas, and you allow failure, failure on calculated risk. And so, what I've seen in my nine years is whenever someone sticks their head up and comes up with a new idea, and it doesn't work exactly as planned, then we attack. And we usually attack through the media. I try not to make my decisions based on tomorrow's headlines, but that requires some resolve. So, counsel, if we're asking our administration... I have to say, I think there's been some unfortunate language in the last three days, sort of implying that our administration hasn't been doing their best. They do yeoman's work, and innovation is occurring on a regular basis. What it often is confronted with is punishment if it doesn't work out as planned. So, I wanted to thank the administration, because I know this has been a difficult process. But I will support it based on the amendments that are up before us. And I hope that what we can do, and I'm going to rely on the mayor for this, is that we work together on coming up with some new ideas. And we're prepared to fail. And with that failure comes learning and adjustment. So, I think on that, I will sit down. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Farrell. I have a quick question before I go to the closer, with regards to this friendly amendment. Mr. Tober, how would administration interpret this new change, if you will? Your worship, the administration, I believe, will look at this from a perspective of saying, are there things that we can do differently that might include the impacts on services in order to find savings equal to $8 million, focusing on efficiency, of course? I'd just like to say that when you're developing a piece of software, there's an end to the project. We run a city that never stops, and there is an aspect of what we do that we have to think about the long term all the time, because there is no end to this project. We don't dissolve the team and turn the lights off and all go to other jobs. This is our job. Our job is to run the city, and our job is to find efficiencies every day. I find it an interesting balance between looking for efficiencies and, at the same time, thinking about how to be way more innovative. Really, what it means is that we have to look at how we deliver service. I've seen many opportunities from councils of the past who wanted to look at core services. I have yet to find one, a council, that is, who will eliminate services. I hope this is one. Thank you, Mr. Tober. And, Mr. Sawyer, where are we at? If you don't mind, the scorecard.
Before the item on the screen, we're sitting at 5.3%.
5.3. Thank you. To close, Mayor Nenshi.
Thank you very much, your worship. And despite your request yesterday, I'm not calling you your mini-worship.
I think I said baby-worship.
I'm very, very pleased to rise in support of this motion, and I especially want to thank Alderman Farrell for her very thoughtful amendments to this. I think what we have on the screen now is something that I would have a lot of trouble imagining why anyone would be opposed to. Let me explain what the impact of this will be. If we were to pass A, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about A in a minute, and I have a change to A, as a matter of fact, then that would be a direct impact on our mill rate. B will have no impact on our mill rate now, because we're not actually confirming those amounts. So, the effect of B, as it's been amended, is in fact to just go back to administration and ask for them to look for more efficiencies, just as Mr. Tober said. I'd have trouble believing that any council would not want administration to be continually looking for efficiencies. This just gives them a target to work towards and a timeline to work towards for what is, as Mr. Tober very rightly said, a continuous process. So, I'm actually very pleased with where this has ended up. I just want to talk about A for a moment. I had the time to redo the numbers a little bit. As I mentioned yesterday, A is to clean up something that we did yesterday. As a matter of fact, we need to clean it up a little bit more, so I have a proposal to a change in the number. Because we asked for the park-and-ride fee to be removed as of April 1st, it means they'll still get 1/4 of revenue. So, according to the forecast, that 1/4 of revenue would be about $1.3, $1.35 million. They might not get it all, and they may need some money for transition, but I'm going to suggest that we take $1 million of that $1.35 and add it to the number on the screen, so that it's actually $3.1 million rather than $2.1 million, to better reflect what we're actually talking about here. And the fact that that will take our proposed tax increase to 1 hair under 5% is completely coincidental. But I'm going to suggest that, if that's all right with Alderman Chabot. Oh, it needs unanimous consent, Madam Clerk? Can I ask for that now, Alderman?
Yes. Okay. Is everyone clear? We now need unanimous consent of counsel at a close to amend A from... And could we get that on the screen, so everyone knows what they're voting on?
Because it was the close?
It's because it's a close?
My mistake. My mistake. I should have done it before.
From a procedural standpoint, we need to be unanimous...
Yeah, I just checked it with...
To speak to that, Alderman Low?
Just to confirm with Mr. Logan, I guess one of the issues always when we elect to remove a fee in April, are we going to continue to enforce it until the 20th or 30th day of March? Because there's always a temptation, while it's coming off, "I'm not going to park," which, your worship, will significantly impact... I understand what you're doing, and I understand how you got the number, but I have this other worry that we may well have set us up to fail on that revenue stream.
Your worship, yes, we would be continuing to apply and enforce the fee until April 1st. March 31st would be the last day of that. April 1st is Saturday, and then the following Monday, April 3rd, I believe, is the first working day, yeah. So, given the revenue projection and the trim to 1, I think it builds a little bit of conservatism in there. We can work with that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Alderman Low. Mr. Sawyer, does the administration have a comment with regards to the adjustment?
Your worship, no. I think yesterday we were thinking this would be taking place at the beginning of the year. If it continues through to the end of March, the change in revenue would be realized, and I think $1 million does... Rather than the $1.3, does provide a bit of contingency for some of the things that were discussed. So, that million extra would be legitimately realized. The $2 million, or the $2.1 under it, I think we talked about yesterday, that does require transportation to find reductions.
Thank you. Counsel, are we clear on the question? Now, it is to amend it from 2.1 to 3. We need unanimous consent of counsel. You've heard the rationale behind it. On the motion as amended, on A only, are we agreed? Agreed. Are there any opposed? That's carried.
May I consent to the close? Thank you. On B, as I said, I think that this gives us a real opportunity to work in conjunction with the administration to move forward. And again, I find myself echoing Alderman Farrell's comments, that, as I always say, we do a wonderful job of hiring good people here at the city. And what this does is it allows us to start to make a small shift in the system and in the mindset, in order to ensure that those good people are being rewarded for innovation and for new ideas. The budget cut is but one of many, many, many tools that we and the managers of the city will use in order to affect this mindset shift. And to Mr. Tober's point, he says he's never seen a council that actually wanted to eliminate something, and he hopes that this one will. I hope so, too, but I also hope that we do it in a way that preserves and enhances services to the city. I'll give you a starter list, just a few things that we might want to start thinking about. I'm not putting these on the table, saying we're going to do them, but just to give you a sense of the kind of thinking that this will allow us to do. In New York City, they've done a major change to their fleet operations using a car-sharing program, vastly reducing the number of vehicles in their fleet through rightsizing and having employees share vehicles. I just read this morning that the General Services Administration in the U.S., the largest civil service department, I think, certainly in the Western world, maybe in the world, has moved entirely... Is moving entirely to open source and cloud computing for their software needs, so we could start to look at some major shifts in our information technology. It's a good opportunity for us to do even more and better benchmarking of management levels and administration levels across departments through the city. And we heard yesterday, one of the most interesting things I heard yesterday was from Dr. Hargisheimer, who noted that a new online registration system in recreation has, absent changes to programming, increased registration and revenues pretty significantly. So, these are the sorts of things that we need to continue to look for and continue to find ways to deliver services, and better services, more efficiently. So, I do hope that counsel will agree to... Will agree to B as much as to A, to start us on that process. And Alderman Farrell's amendment ensures that... Ensures... I'm not going to say that one, Alderman Farrell. That word scares me. Ensures that counsel rightly maintains the power to approve or deny those decisions. So, passing B just starts us on a process of asking more questions, and I think that's a good thing. So, I do hope that you'll support it.
Thank you, Mayor Nenshi. I have a request for a recorded vote. We've already passed A.
We just passed the amendment to Alderman.
We just passed the amendment. I apologize.
Can we do A by voice?
Yes, we can. On the motion on A only, are we agreed?
Agreed.
Are there any opposed? A is carried. Thank you. I have a request for a recorded vote on B.
Alderman Hargis, 4. Alderman Farrell, 4. Alderman Karah, 4. Alderman Collier, 4. Alderman Chabot, 4. Alderman Demong, 4. Alderman McLeod, 4. Alderman Low, against. Alderman Putmans, 4. Alderman Keating, 4. Alderman Stevenson, 4. Alderman Jones, 4. Alderman Pincott, against. Deputy Mayor Maher, 4. That's carried, your worship.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. I have another... I'm not sure if this is a motion arising or an amendment to the budget, but I'm going to read it out that...
Let's hear it, and we'll figure it out.
...direct administration to report to counsel on any unforeseen impacts to services, assets, and internal departmental supports if and when they arise as a result of the budget. So, I...
Would we do that as a course of normal business, Mr. Tober?
Your worship, indeed, we would. We have quarterly EIR reports that we report to counsel on how we're doing. All the members of the ALT come to finance, and we report on changes to performance measures that are impacted because of budget cuts, or actually in the experience of administering the organization. So, we do have a system that does that already. Now, if you're asking for something specific related to any particular budget cuts, or just as an ongoing?
No, no. I think as an ongoing. I sometimes think we're shielded from the consequences of our decisions, and you hear some of the impacts through the grapevine and not through formal channels. And I want to ensure that you feel comfortable letting us know when we've made a mistake or when we need to adjust. It's back into that innovation.
Right. I find it's productive and useful for longevity to share bad news facts.
Bad news facts. Not all of them welcome, but you're needed. All right. I'll not move it. Thanks.
You're happy to withdraw it, then?
Yep.
Alderman Farrell? All right, then.
Thank you, your worship. Before I begin, I do have to say that I was a little sorry for Alderman Karah the other day, when he was placed in confusion land. And so, I have racked my brain to make sure that we appropriately name that. And, your worship, if you were able to get to page 132 of the Book of Keating, you would have been able to read about my high regard for Karar Topolus. But I also want to talk, your worship... I withdraw my regard. I also want to thank you, your worship, and the rest of the council for enabling an atmosphere where of open discussion, regardless of the sensitivity of the topic, is here, that we can talk about all and come forward and move on from there. I also want to talk about, again, the Book of Keating, where I'm quite sure that I was quoted the other day by our luncheon speaker. I believe he attributed it to Bernard, but I didn't feel I should correct him at that time. But as George Bernard Shaw said, "I hear you say 'why,' always 'why.' You see things, you say 'why,' but I dream things and never say, and I say, 'Why not?'" And so, that follows into what we're talking about as the reserve funds. So much to learn in so little time, and I need to know that. And I know I've opened a can of worms, and I'm quite glad I did, because we have more questions than answers, and I know that a review of them is coming, and we are looking at them, and we do have to continue in that aspect. I do have some concerns with the reserve funds, not so much that I dislike the funds in general, but if you look at the book from 2009, and I... I can go through the totals and add them all up and dictate to them, but technically in five years, they have grown by $100 million a year. And I think that is where my concern is. We have raised taxes continually, but we have also set money into reserve funds, into savings account continually. And all I want to do is to be able to understand whether it should continue at that rate, or whether it shouldn't be, and whether these reserve funds need to be looked at. Many of them have no caps. Many of them have no way of where we're going with them. They are just there. And if I look at the book, and as I say, I can go through, so I'm also prepared, Your Worship, to follow my own sword. I did have a motion I was going to put forward, that we look at some transfers into operations, so that we didn't have such a high tax rate. But I have believed over the last four days, we have raised taxes and some, or raised services in some places where it was required, and we have reduced, and we have looked for efficiencies in other areas. And I'm fairly satisfied with that, and I hope that that will continue. Therefore, I will not be putting my motion forward, as, like I say, I will follow my own sword, rather than ask counsel to do it on theirs. I do have more notes here, but I don't want to continue on this and make it a kind of an issue. I just want to say, in the audit that's coming up with all of these, and in the future time of counsel, I really hope we look at these in depth. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Keating. There is no sword falling here. I think you raise important questions, and there are questions that I know counsel has addressed and will continue to address. And I suspect that Alderman Pincot is about to enlighten us on how they're being addressed. Or is it something else entirely? You know, again, it's unorthodox, but we're having good, open discussions, so go ahead.
I did actually put my light on, as Chair of Audit Committee, to assure you that an audit has been performed on all of our reserves, that a lot of work has happened, and a lot of work is ongoing with the reserves. And I and counsel, and I believe the Audit Committee, are very pleased, as well as Finance Committee, are very pleased with the response to the reserve audit that was performed. We are in a continual review of all of the reserves. Administration has put in a process where each of the reserves gets specifically reviewed every three years. So it's on a rotational basis, so a third, a third, a third, every year. That is an ongoing process. I can assure you, Alderman Keating, that the reserves are appropriate. They're continually reviewed to ensure that they are appropriate. Those reviews are brought to counsel every year through the Finance Committee, and that reserves are not a slush fund, but reserves are a very, very important tool that counsel and administration needs in order to perform the work that we do that makes this city a great place.
Thank you, Alderman Pincot. Alderman Farrell?
Well, my colleagues have been urging me to put something forward. I've been thinking of-
Okay, new rule. We have to hear it before you second it.
Alderman Chabot had, Alderman Chabot had wanted to second it, Alderman Mar, if you don't mind. Well, I think a number of people might want to. And I had been planning on bringing a notice of motion forward, but it seemed like there's energy to tackle it today. And I'm sorry, I'll apologize in advance. This will lengthen the debate substantially. But you're, I'm doing it so you lose your pool?
That's the only reason.
No, not at all. Mr. Pritchard, fluoride. It costs $750,000 approximately per year, plus we are about to have to spend some capital dollars in improving the plant. Could you give us a little bit of detail on that area?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, that's correct. It's, I think the last time we reported to counsel, we talked about a number of about half a million bucks a year, and that continues to rise because of the cost of the chemical. So the annual operating and maintenance cost of fluoridation is about $750,000 a year. And shortly, pretty soon, we're going to have to make a capital reinvestment in the equipment, because it's 20-odd years old. So that's, we don't know exactly what that's worth, but it's probably capital cost of between $6 and $8 million.
So that needs to be made soon, that commitment?
That decision needs to be made soon, yeah. Or at least to get an indication, if anything's likely to change. Obviously, we wouldn't be wanting to throw good money after bad.
Okay. I'll, it's not an amendment to the budget?
It's not an amendment to the, sorry, Alderman Farrell, may I?
Yes, of course.
So it's not an amendment to the budget. We can accept it as a motion arising, if you would like to do so. My advice to you, which you're welcome to take or leave, is to put this as a notice of motion for December 13th, so that your fellow members of council have the opportunity to prepare themselves for the debate, because I would suspect that one of your colleagues is going to move to table in any way.
They may. Now, why would it not be part of the budget? Because it's requesting a change to the license? It's, the motion is-
Mr. Tober can speak to that.
Your Worship, it's almost, it's very similar to the debate we had yesterday on the dividend. We are not in a position to change the budget arbitrarily without first having had a response from Alberta Environment as to whether or not they will amend our license or not.
Okay.
It's contingent upon that. So I suppose you could do a motion arising, asking the administration, just like we did with NMAX, to prepare the paperwork necessary to approach Alberta Environment to amend our license. And so that, I think, is appropriate. But again, it's a question of whether or not you want your fellow members of council to have time to research this topic or not. You could proceed today. We just, it wouldn't impact the budget, Your Worship.
So I'm going to look around the, do it today?
Do it, do it, do it.
Well, all right then. I'll attempt to do it today. Thank you. And I have, then I have two motions arising.
We'll wait to get it on the screen, but I think Mr. Pritchard wants to respond.
Thank you, Your Worship. And as the city manager said, we would have to ask Alberta Environment to amend our license. And the key piece of information that I would like to add is that almost certainly they would require us to advertise that and invite what is called statements of concern from affected parties. And that would undoubtedly open up the public debate. So anything that might or might not be realized, in my view, would not materialize in 2011. It would take substantial public input to see the process proceed. So that's just a caution that I wanted to get on the table, so that all members of council understand that it would inevitably lead to quite a lengthy public debate involving Alberta Health Services, Alberta Environment, and the public.
I really would do it as a notice of motion, Alderman Farrell, but that's just my advice.
I'm going to take your advice on that one. I know you're grimacing, Alderman Stevenson, but we'll have this discussion later. Thanks.
Of course, if you wanted to throw in the pesticide one right now, Alderman Farrell, just saying. No, I'm kidding. Did you say you have another motion arising, Alderman Farrell?
Well, have we voted on the budget?
Not yet. I still have a couple more, and I know Alderman Low has one.
So I'm not sure if a motion arising is-
Yeah, we really ought to wait unless it's arising directly from what we just-
No, it's arising as a result of the entire budget.
Okay, then we'll wait. So I'm going to now ask for any more, any more motions relating to budget. Alderman Low, is it for the one we talked about this morning?
No, Your Worship. I think at some point, we have to finish the budget. At that point, I will move that we adopt the budget.
Yes, I've got that motion here.
Okay, so if you could signal me when you're prepared to accept that motion, I can do so. Then we can move to the motions arising, and I do have one. I know you have one.
Yes, the one that I have, because it relates to an FSR transfer, I need to do it before your motion to accept the budget.
You're absolutely right.
So I'm going to do that one now, if that's all right, if there are no others.
When we're finished with that one, then if you recognize me, I will put the motion to adopt. Once that's passed, and if you recognize me, I have a motion arising, which relates to yours-
Perfect.
-then we can pick up the rest.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other motions from members of council? Alderman Chabot?
Thank you, Worship. I'm not sure whether or not I need to do a motion specifically at this point. I would like to know from administration, probably from Mr. Tober. In light of the proposals that administration had put forward in regards to the changes in some of the business units, specifically in transportation, where the recommendation in Book One had requested, had suggested a readjustment of relinquishment of 79,000 hours, as was previously projected. Are there going to be any capital costs or capital adjustments that will be, need to be made to our budget as a result of us going to the full 140,000 hours? It's kind of a strange reverse question. Usually, you ask what the operational implications of capital expenditures are, but now I'm asking what the capital expenditures or costs associated with operational increases are going to be? There's not. So we've already got it built into our capital budget, as far as what buses we're going to need to accommodate all of these extra man-hours?
Your Worship, the capital program had identified new LRV cars and buses, and the support from council on operating will put those to use. So we're okay.
So if we hadn't done this, would we have had buses sitting idle?
They would have been underutilized. I doubt they would have been idle. We also have some 30-year-old buses that we're trying to get rid of, so that would have helped us do that as well.
And thank you for that, Mr. Logan. So just as a quick follow-up, in regards to the overall budget, then there is not going to be any capital adjustments that are going to need to be made at all on our budget, because we haven't debated anything to do with the capital budget?
Your Worship, the Report 71, the Attachment 1, which is the recommended adjustments from administration, had a whole series of capital adjustments by department. Those have been approved, I think with one exception, and there's no further ones beyond those.
Okay. Thank you for that. Thank you, Worship.
Thank you, Alderman Chabot. I'm going to leave my chair in a moment, but I actually have a question for Madam Clerk before I do that. Madam Clerk, there was one other emotion to file, the Civic Partners. Have we done that one yet? Okay, so could I please have a motion to, can you just give me the wording, Madam Clerk?
Yeah, Your Worship, it's just to file Report CPS 201057. It's already been dealt-
Because we took 201057 off the table to talk about the parking authority, we just need to put it back. So Alderman Stevenson, Alderman Keating, on that motion, are we agreed? Any opposed? Very well. Deputy Mayor Mar?
I hate to always have to fuss with my chair now.
Sorry.
Mayor Nenshi?
I'd like to put a motion to authorize the creation of what we've been calling an innovation fund in our discussions. I see Alderman Collier-Cart, I think. Well, you get to do that. I don't have to do it. So the motion is that council authorize use of up to $5 million from the Fiscal Stability Reserve for innovation and pilot projects subject to the approval of council. So the idea here is that we are creating a fund that council still needs to approve, but that can be used by business units for innovative programs, experiments, and pilot projects that they would like to try. We have a couple of ideas already, and one of them is going to be put to you a little bit later this morning for uses of that fund. But for example, you know, we've had a lot of talk around an express bus service from downtown to the airport. And within Calgary Transit's regular planning process, to approve such a new route takes a while, because you're going to be approving base budget funding forever and ever. So one could, for example, imagine an application from Calgary Transit to, "We're going to try a downtown express bus route to the airport for six months or a year. We'd like to see how it works. Can you help us fund that?" These are the sorts of things that I imagine this fund would be used for. And I think the creation of this fund, again, we use this, we've been using this term a lot in the last few days, but the creation of this fund sends a powerful signal to the city administration that this is a place where innovation is welcomed and supported, and gives us a little bit of flexibility in order to do more experimentation and piloting of projects. So I do hope that you'll support this.
Thank you. To speak to that, Alderman Carrar?
Thank you, Your Worship. I think this is a great idea. I'd be very interested in two things. Number one, figuring out the terms of reference, figuring out how that works. And I guess that's something that would come back to council if we set this up. The other thing I'm asking is whether $5 million is enough.
So deliberately didn't set up a governance structure for the fund, Alderman Carrar, because I want the projects to come back to council. I would imagine that the individual projects would have their own steering committee or governance structures. So Alderman Low is going to be putting a motion shortly for one use of the fund that includes within it the governance structure. Is $5 million enough? Well, I don't know. It depends on what kind of applications we get for the fund. You know, we could authorize transfers from the FSR over the course of the year, should we need more money. And in reality, we could always just authorize transfers from the FSR for each one of the projects. But I like the idea of creating this fund with a little bit of a more streamlined process where it comes to council, so that we have the ability to move more quickly. And I think this is a good number to start with.
I think it's a great idea, and I definitely will be supporting this motion.
Thank you, Alderman Carrar. To speak to this, Alderman Putman?
Yes, thank you. Wholeheartedly support this, and very excited by how it sends perhaps new messages about risk in administration, and how we are actually encouraging, pushing things a bit further than had. Same thoughts as Alderman Carrar. And I'm wondering, would it be appropriate to enshrine a mechanism in this motion to make further draws on the FSR, if appropriate, during the year, and others build in at this point, while we're on this topic, the ability to, perhaps a maximum number of somewhat more than $5 million, because I too somehow feel that $5 million is, seems like a modest amount.
Thank you, Alderman Putman. To close, Mayor Nenshi, is there anyone else to speak to this? To close, please?
I would have been the first person in three days just to say closed and sit down, but I'll answer Alderman Putman's question. Let's start with it. And if we find that there's such an overwhelming appetite for innovation within the city, we can always revisit. But I think this is a good place to start. It's closed.
Thank you, Mayor Nenshi. Is counsel clear on the question? On the motion, are we agreed? Are there any opposed? That's carried. Thank you.
So one last chance, any final motions relating to the budget, before I ask Alderman Low to move the budget. Alderman Farrell?
Thank you. I, how much did we cut the library? Half a million? Is that what we did? Yes.
Dr. Hargesheimer?
There, they actually got a $2 million increase, as it stands right now, $2 million to open the Saddle Ridge-
Okay.
...library, as well as $850,000 for operating funds. But the original estimate in, when we set the 9 to 11 budget was 1.3. So they did, they were reduced by, their increase was reduced by $500,000.
Okay, and that increase was to accommodate quite a bit of growth? That-
It was an inflationary estimate-
Yes, that's what I mean.
...as of 9 to 11. And when I met with the, all of the Civic Partners, Gary made a case, Mr. Meek made a case for $350,000 of that to be reinstated. And so basically, the reduction from the previous estimate is $500,000 at this point.
Okay. Well, then I'm going to move that we add that back into the budget. Our library system is one of the leanest in the country, if not the leanest in the country. And it's one of the, it has one of the highest usage rates, and we should be proud of it. We, I think, one of the only municipalities that charge for issuing, the issuance of a card. We can't charge for a membership, but we can charge for the actual issuance of a card. And so I think this sends a message, our library system is important. Libraries are part of a democratic society, and they offer knowledge to everyone. And so I think- part of a democratic society, and they offer knowledge to everyone. And so I think it's an important gesture by this council. Thank you.
And I think I saw Alderman Carrab seconding that. Alderman McLeod? I thank you for being chivalrous, Alderman Carrab. Just FYI, Mr. Sawyer has informed me that prior to the adoption of this motion, we are sitting at 4.957%, even though I don't care about that number. And the adoption of this would, would take us right to 5%. So, nice even number. Not quite as nice as 4.999, Alderman Farrell, although I don't care about that number. Alderman McLeod?
Your worship, before we go too far, can we just get clarification on the amendment?
Sure.
Is a reconsideration motion required?
I don't think so because we had that subject to further changes motion up above. So I think that she can put it as an addition to, as an addition to library budget. It's not really an amendment. It's a, it's a main motion now because we haven't approved the capital plans yet. That's how we've been dealing with them yesterday. So in any case, so the motion then is to add, and Mr. Sawyer will give us the right program numbers and stuff, but the motion is to add $500,000 to the operating budget of the Calgary Public Library, correct? Okay. I'm sorry, Alderman McLeod, I had recognized you, but I realize that there were a couple of lights ahead of you. So Alderman Low? Nope. Alderman Chabot?
Well, first of all, although I, I agree that our library is an important contribution or important service to the city, important amenity, so is the Calgary Zoo, so is Heritage Park, so are a number of other amenities that the City of Calgary provides. So we asked our civic partners to come forward to committee to let us know what they could or could not live with or without. Mr. Meek, at that point, said, although he would like to have more money, that this is what he felt that he could live with. And we've built in growth for the Saddle Ridge facility, and there is increases to this particular civic entity. So if we're going to start, you know, putting back money into the budget, then we should look at all the civic partners and not segregate one out of the bunch and make exceptions for one over the other. So although I support the library, I think there's a lot of things that need to be reviewed insofar as the library is concerned, especially in light of the, the changing world that we live in in regards to communications and information gathering, that I think the library needs to look at repurposing itself as well. But at this point, I can't support adding to one civic entity without looking at all of them in, in a complete package, so I won't be supporting this motion.
Thank you, Alderman Chabot. Alderman McLeod?
Thank you, your worship. During the election, I had, I was pleasantly surprised by the number of emails that I got regarding the library, and there were many, and they were very diverse in, in the kinds of things that they, they were talking about. I got some that were long stories about the role of the library growing up in rural, rural Alberta. I heard a lot about democracy and the role of libraries and democracy and information, a lot about poverty and how libraries equalize the access to information for low-income families, literacy, English as a second language programs. So, so I think all those are very important. But I would also add that the library has done an amazing amount of work. They're leaders in the country, and they're doing it on the lowest budget, and we're rewarding them by taking more money away. And that makes no sense to me at all. Thank you.
Alderman Putmans?
Thank you, your worship. I too would like to speak in favor of this motion. As much as it pains me to say, given my past experience with other organizations involved in the civic partners program, this was an issue that came up at the doors daily and many times each day, and of all of the civic partners, the Calgary Public Library was routinely identified as a tremendously important part of, in the lives of families in Ward Six, a large but perhaps unscientific sampling of the Calgary public. And, and I'd like to respond a little bit to an earlier comment in terms of reassessing the, the new role and perhaps media communications and information and knowledge delivery. It surprised me how in many households, the, the trip to the library still involved a trip to collect books. And while many of us perhaps have access to and the resources and the privilege to, to use the latest in technologies, many, many homes, and for that matter, young families, do not. And their ability to access wonderful literature for their families from young to old remains at the city library. So I wish I was a more articulate advocate for the library, but my vote would certainly be to support this motion. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Alderman Putmans. Alderman Keating?
Thank you, your worship. With the background in education, I completely understand the need for libraries, but I'm at one of these crossroads again where I have, I hate to say it, but I, I agree with Alderman Chabot. This is kind of a question that has been asked and answered. We can't open up one without opening up them all. We did discuss it. We did accept it, and I think that's the way it should have stayed, so I will not support this.
Thanks, Alderman Keating. Alderman Marr?
Thank you. In contrast to my learned friend over here, I will support this for the very reasons that we've heard. The library is one of the most widely used in North America. It is also the lowest funded per capita, and that is something that, that is unacceptable. If we are going to provide a city of education, knowledge, and hope, we need to be able to provide that access to those that can afford it the least, to those that have opportunities throughout the city of Calgary, and this will allow us to do that. Yes, Mr. Meek said that he could live with it. He could live with that cut, but I feel that we cannot. Thank you.
Thanks, Alderman Marr. Alderman Hodges?
Yes, your worship. I'm sure it'll come as no surprise that I will support the motion as well. In fact, I worked in the Calgary Public Library for a number of years, years ago. I...
What was it like before council?
There was. In between, in between attending public hearings of council. So...
I'm still working on that there was a time before Alderman Hodges.
With the dinosaurs from the earth?
When the earth cooled, as they say. The public library serves an important function here in the city. It has, it's one of the, if not the best in Canada, certainly amongst the best in Canada, the most, on a per capita basis, the most well-used. It's got a long history with the Carnegie Library over in our Central Park here in the city, and they make do with a lot of things that other organizations enjoy. It is a lean operation. A cut of 500,000 is significant in terms of their budget, and I think that money should be restored and not be attached to other of the civic partners' budgets, all of whom have different circumstances. So I will support the motion, your worship.
Thank you, Alderman Hodges. Alderman Stevenson?
Thank you, your worship. Well, I was under the impression that Alderman Hodges still ran a library. But, but anyway, I just want to say, I am actually proud to say that I support Alderman Chabot in his statements, because I am, I feel exactly the same way as, as he does. Let's make it clear, this isn't a cut to the, the library. It's a, they still get a substantial increase, and I'm a big supporter of the library, and I heard too, a lot of it at the, at the doors and in communication with my constituents. But folks, everybody that was talking about it was talking about the fact that Mr. Meeks had made a statement about the fact that they were looking at cutting hours and not being able to open the Saddle Ridge branch. Those statements are what got people worked up. We're giving the library a substantial increase, and I think that to take this and make this adjustment over top of what all the rest, all the civic partners all came in good faith with their proposal to cut back, and I think they all did a great job, and I appreciate it, including the library. But I do not agree that we should now start going into those adjustments and saying, "One of those civic partners deserves to be given back what they had volunteered to, to take out." So I won't be supporting the motion.
Thank you, Alderman Stevenson. Alderman Carrab?
Thank you, your worship. Just briefly, I want to reiterate what a lot of, well, I can go, I can be briefer if I don't get the heckling from the side. I'm going to reiterate what a lot of my colleagues have said regarding hearing about the library at the doors. I also want to reiterate the fact that this is a lean and mean organization. And if we're, if this whole exercise of this budget is to show that we can be more efficient by cutting it back, I think the library is already ahead of that curve, and they've proven they can do it. And I think we want to reward them with the, the ability to take the innovations that they've been forced to achieve and see what they can go from here. So I'm definitely going to support this.
Thanks, Alderman Carrab. Alderman Demong?
I wanted to say, and I'll do this unemotionally, neither pro or con, Chabot, I'm an avid supporter of the library, and I always have been, and I always plan to be. Having said that, if we wish to, to treat the library as, as a unique entity other than our other civic partners, I encourage us to look at this going forward and start looking at it in a different way. We keep referring to these dollar values as cuts. The fact is, it's, it's not a cut. It's a reduction in the increase that we're planning on giving, and my understanding is we have increased their budget slightly higher than the other civic partners when it came to, came to SPC. For these reasons, I, I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Demong. Alderman Farrell, may I speak before I call on you to close?
Thank you. I will spare you all my stirring speech about the importance of the library in my life and the Forest Lawn Public Library growing up. You've probably all heard it 42 million times already. That said, I can't support this motion. This is an organization to whom we have given a $2.8 million budget increase this year, more than any other civic partner. We gave them that increase based on what they told us their priorities were. They will open that Saddle Town branch on time, and they will have the funds they need for growth as they told us. I cannot support giving money to any organization or department in the city in the absence of a business case and understanding precisely what that money is spent for. And while it is true that we heard about this a lot during the election campaign, what Alderman Stevenson is saying is also true. There were a few civic partners and others who acted in a way that I think is irresponsible during the first round of budget cuts, threatening huge, huge, huge cuts and getting people worked up about it, and I don't think we ought to reward that kind of behavior. In reality, once we took, once we lowered the temperature and had a meaningful discussion, we were able to find out precisely what the library's requirements were to get the Saddle Town branch open, and we gave them the money. So I don't see any need for us to go back and treat this partner differently than all the others. As much as I love this one, you know, the partner, the civic partner on whose finance committee I sat before the election had extremely difficult budget times, and they sat down and they said, "The city is having a rough time. We'll figure out a way to absorb this 1.25% cut." And they did it on a much, much, much smaller budget than the Calgary Public Library. So as a result, much as I appreciate the sentiment behind this motion, and much as I appreciate that civic partner, I can't support this.
Thank you. Well, the city has added the population of Saskatoon in the last 10 years. So the Saddle Town Library is only an example of the growth demands on the library. We have a system that has been lean for far too many years, and, and I've got a quote in front of me, "Cutting libraries in a recession is like cutting hospitals in a plague." That was Eleanor Crumblehume who said that. I don't know Eleanor Crumblehume, but I, I like her quote. Free access to knowledge is a pillar of a civilized society. And we have a library system that, in many of the branches, not open in the evenings, not open on Sundays, and as Alderman Putman said, that some, in some cases, some families only access to research and reading is through that library system. So let's imagine ourselves in that situation. Yes, our other civic partners are important, but it's not like our public library. It's, it's, as I've said, a pillar of a civilized society, free access to information. So council, I, this is $500,000. It restores growth based on the growth that we've had throughout our city. So in essence, we are behind in a way, and we continue to, I think, punish this organization for, for providing a very lean, lean service to Calgarians. So please, council, support this motion.
Thank you. On the motion, as you see it on the screen, are we agreed? Opposed? Call the roll, please.
Alderman McLeod?
Agreed.
Alderman Marr? Alderman Pincott?
Yes.
Alderman Putmans?
Sorry, excuse me. Yes.
Alderman Stevenson?
No.
Alderman Carrab?
Yes.
Alderman Chabot?
No.
Alderman Colliercard?
No.
Alderman Demong?
No.
Alderman Farrell?
Yes.
Alderman Hodges?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Keating?
No.
Alderman Low?
Yes.
Mayor Nenshi?
No.
It's Carrie, your worship.
Very well. Any other motions dealing with the operating budget? Seeing none. Alderman Low?
I'm going to take a minute here, your worship, and just look around. I'm sure it'll change some of these pool times.
Did you say you have next Tuesday? Well, Alderman Low is about to speak, so you may still win.
Your worship, that the 2000, I'm going to move that the 2011 operating and capital budget and business plans, as amended, be adopted, subject to further reports and amendments being adopted prior to the mill rate bylaw being adopted by council in 2011 April. I have a second here.
Alderman Colliercard seconded as vice chair of your committee.
It's just open very briefly, your worship. It's been a very interesting experience. And I guess around budgets, I've had several interesting experiences. For the new members of council, my first budget was really interesting. Second one was somewhat different than that. Third one, we got into another process, and as I, I see the process evolving, and this one was significantly different than we've done before. So we're here. I, if I have a kind of an overview of what we've done here, we heard an awful lot about the election. We heard, I think we've seen some election campaign promises achieved, and we've done some good work, and we can move forward on it. So with your support, council.
Thanks, Alderman Low. I know this was a pre-prepared motion, but I noticed there's an error in it. Because as we know very well, it's not called the Mill Rate Bylaw. Okay, Mr. Tobler, once more, just for fun. It's called the? Tax Rate Bylaw. Every time he says it, I feel like it's going to be a carnival, and there'll be popcorn, and it'll be fun. I'm told it's not really that fun. Alderman Hodges?
Just briefly, I turned over my mind for a number, number of times whether I would end up supporting the budget or not. We have done some good work in the last three days. You in particular have taken the lead in bringing forth a number of motions that I think enhance the process. In particular, the one that you introduced late yesterday afternoon on the across-the-board look at, for efficiencies, the $8 million that hopefully can be, hopefully can be achieved. And so I think in this budget process, we've actually cut some new ground. We've turned over some new ground, and I think, in a certain sense, have made a certain amount of progress in that regard. So I will be supporting the motion.
Thank you, Alderman Hodges. Alderman Chabot?
Thank you, your worship. And the way this is worded makes it rather difficult for anyone not to support it. Not that I have inclinations of not supporting the budget. It's, it's just that it kind of presupposes that there's going to be some further adjustments that are going to be adopted by council, and... And there's the most latest, the latest motion that was put forward proposes bringing it down to, what, about 4.3% or something like that, if those were all approved.
I can answer that question. So right now, as of what we've got, it is sitting at 5.0009. And Mr. Sawyer assures me they'll find the 900 bucks, so it's five. Or $4.90 on the average house. The reason it's worded this way is because we specifically asked for three things, one of which is included and two of which are not. The one is the NMAX stuff. We have included those numbers in the 5.0, so those will come back. They won't change the mill rate. But the $2 million from the police is not included here. And the $8 million in the motion we passed this morning is also not included here. So what we can tell Calgarians is, the absolute maximum, barring calamity, that the tax rate will go up is 5%, and the minimum, should we accept the numbers from the police and the $8 million in cuts, is 4%.
So it does, actually, your worship, and it kind of helps to make my debate here more plausible in that there was some cuts that were proposed by administration that council did not adopt in Book One. There's, there's three major business units in the city that, or three large budget items in our budget. Police being one, transportation being another, and another one that I don't even want to talk about because I don't want to cut into that budget. As far as trying to find additional cuts and ask administration to come back with something different than what they've already proposed, I think is unrealistic. I think some of the cuts that we're going to see coming back on the proposed plethora of cuts is going to require a cut, or death by 1,000 cuts, from a number of different business units. But there's still going to be, need to be some fairly significant cuts in some of our larger business units. So some of the cuts that council did not approve previously are going to have to face again. So I'm prepared to support this today. But unless council is willing to take a hard line on some of those business units and make those necessary cuts, we're not going to get to 4%. So I'll support it today. I can't guarantee you what my, what my level of support is going to be in the future. It will all be dependent on what council is willing to adopt with the new proposed budget cuts. So I'm supporting it today, a little bit reluctantly, looking forward to seeing what administration is going to come back with. Thank you, your worship.
Thanks for that, Alderman Chabot. And I'll remind you and all members of council that it's, thanks to Alderman Farrell, and it's a good thing, it's our prerogative now to make that, to make that further adjustment between now and tax rate bylaw time. Alderman Keating.
Thank you, your worship. As much as I would like to go lower, I am happy with what we have accomplished in the last four days. I made a few notes here. We have looked at some transfers. We have looked at ways of finding funds from legacy. We have looked at doing dividends. We've looked at the $8 million reduction, which I think was crucial. We have looked at the Innovation Fund plus other reductions, plus increases where they were warranted. So despite my feeling that we need to look further, I think we have done an excellent job, and I will support it.
Thank you, Alderman Colliercard.
Thank you, your worship. Well, first of all, to the former colleagues that started working on this budget back in May-June, when we, when we knew that we were in significant problems because we had deferred a number of things that we could have made decisions on earlier. So that compounded the challenge this time. And to the new council, I'm really, really impressed with our new colleagues and your grasp of the issues in such a very, very short period of time. It is a daunting challenge, and I'm really, really proud of the contribution that each of you have made. Also, Mr. Tobert, significant cuts on Mr. Sawyer that you led this organization through the $47 million to get to this point. But you, you know, I don't think it was much of a summary. It was quiet in the fact that some of us were out campaigning. Maybe you could focus your efforts. But it was a tremendous challenge for this organization. The general managers, I don't think we've been through the tough, the tough decisions we had to make within the last six months. We are in the, we are in the sunset of a recession of a two-year period of time that was extremely challenging. And while we're out of the recession, our city is still struggling a little. We are starting to grow a little bit. But, you know, I think that perhaps the numbers haven't changed all that much. Like, it was at 6.7, now we're at 5. But I hope that Calgarians look through these numbers and see that significant changes have been made here, signals and change of direction. If they would listen to the conversations that we've had over these last three and a half days, they'll see that there's a different tone, that we are reflecting what we heard at the doors and what we've heard Calgarians say. I also want to acknowledge the whole social media component to how people came forward and how they've continued to monitor and watch this discussion and engage in the debate. I want to acknowledge Diana Garner in City Clerks. They, they have changed a lot of the ways that we have been able to manage the information, Ms. Gray, and all of the staff, and to get these chambers ready in time for us to debate and to have the open captioning. Much has changed here in a very short period of time, is what I'm trying to say. But it's just beginning. When I look again, and Alderman Lowe and I have frequently reviewed, referenced a case for fiscal imbalance. Our work is just beginning to join, to join arms with other organizations in this city to come up with a new urban strategy for cities, not only in Alberta, but across Canada. And on purpose, I kept a press release that the Finance Minister Ted Morton released on November 22nd. And let me just share some of the statements he made in there. Minister Morton said, "We can't control what happens to energy prices, the Canadian dollar equity markets, or the US economy, all of which affect our revenues." I would say us too. He said that the revenue for 2010-11 is forecast to be $34 million, and our expenses, provincial expenses for 2010-11 is forecast to be $39 billion. Our deficit will be $5 billion. Their deficit, their operating deficit last year was $4 billion. Their deficit this year is $5 billion, up $257 million. Well, guess what? We all know what this means. Municipalities in Alberta cannot run deficits. We've had to really incur the downloading of a tremendous burden during this last two years and still balance our books. And we've done so in an exemplary way over the last three days. So thank you, your worship, for allowing me to go on and on. But I could say that this whole fiscal imbalance and, and the way that cities such as Calgary, who are one of the most dynamic cities in the country, things must change, and I think we're relying on your leadership to help us get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Colliercard, for that very eloquent description of exactly where we stand. And I won't be too mad at you for taking away some of the things I wanted to say.
Oh, okay.
Alderman Pincott.
Thank you, your worship. Well, I'll reiterate something that I've said a couple of times, which is, budget is a tool. The budget is a tool that is available to us and to administration to execute a strategic plan. I think that we have done some very good things towards acknowledging what part of our strategic plan is and executing on that. When I look at our commitment to transit, I mean, that is, that is pretty significant. We have identified that very thing in the Calgary Transportation Plan. And we have followed through with making a significant commitment to that. But at the end of the day, the budget is just a tool. And if we don't have the commitment to the strategic plan, if we don't have the commitment to, to our city and where we want to go with our city, then the budget is just, go back to it, just a bunch of numbers. It's just spending money. I think that one of the things that I have heard from my constituents through this, through this process and through the feedback that I've received has been that Calgarians actually don't mind paying for services. They like the services that the city gives them. They want to know that what they're paying for is being used efficiently and effectively, that they're getting value for their dollar. They don't mind spending the dollar. But they want to know that they're doing it, they're getting real service and real, exactly what we have said that we want to do. So that at the end of the day, that is our ultimate challenge. Our challenge isn't to be as cheap as possible. Our challenge isn't to cut, and I'll say it again, and disguise it as reinvention. Our challenge is to be efficient. Our challenge is to hear what Calgarians want and need from their city, to make it a livable place, to make it a place that they can continue to be proud of. And our challenge is to deliver on that. And where, some days, we're not going to deliver on it. And some days, we're going to not deliver on it as well as we could and should. And then other days, we are going to over-deliver on that. And when I can, I can think of examples of where we have over-delivered on it and where, and I think of this summer, River of Light. River of Light was over-delivering on a small piece of money like you wouldn't believe. And those are the things that make this place a great city. And that is going to be our ongoing challenge, not just for those of us in the room, but for the other million people that live here. I think that we, we mustn't forget that. We mustn't forget that. That the budget is just a tool on being able to deliver rivers of light throughout the city.
Thank you, Alderman Pincott. I think a very important reminder, and I'm sure you didn't mean we're actually going to dredge rivers across the city so that we can put art in them. Uh-oh. Alderman Demong.
I also appreciate the, very much, the wide-open discussion that we've been able to have over the last few days. Thank you, Mayor Nenshi, for allowing us to skirt some of the guidelines that are usually found in the city council. I think it's important with the brand-new council that we have that we take a chance to find out where our natural boundaries are. Over the last few days, we have been discussing what we've been hearing at the doors. Well, what I heard more often than not was that the voters feel that they've been overtaxed for the last few years. The city's been raising taxes above the rate of inflation, above the MPI, for quite some time. And although some may say that we have one of the lowest tax rates in the country, I've also been told that that's one of the reasons people like to live here in Calgary. They like the fact that we have a low tax base. And having said that, when you tie in the franchise fees, the user fees, you realize that our property taxes more along the lines into the median of the overall tax base across the country. More importantly, average Calgarians and seniors living on pensions are finding it ever increasingly difficult to match their rising, or not-so-quick-rising standard of living with our rising tax base for the property taxes. And we've been told that we should be trying to match that more closely. We've talked about sending signals and symbols over the last few days. I was truly hoping that today we could, or this week, we could have sent a stronger signal to Calgarians of fiscal prudence. I hope that going forward, we can achieve that and do a better job on the, on the way forward. Our challenge, I believe, is to be responsible to Calgarians as well. And they, I believe, have been challenging us to be far more careful with their money, whether that be cutting, whether that be decreasing increases, whether that be more fiscally prudent with, or not fiscally prudent, but more properly using their funds and channeling it into the areas that are more responsive. I think that is the challenge that faces city council today and going forward. 5%, hopefully 4%, is, is, yes, a number. But it's a number that I find a little too high. I was really hoping that we could get to the MPI, if not below it. We have been raising taxes higher than the inflation rate over the last few years. And the fact of the matter is, we have been in a recession over the last couple of years. We may well be out of it. As some of my colleagues have mentioned, we are on the way out, and that's fantastic. But through that, we didn't really respond as a city with a responsive tax base to say, "Yes, we realize that you're hurting down there, and we will respond to it in that respect." For this reason, I will not be supporting this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Demong. Anyone else before I call on Alderman Lowe to close? Alderman Lowe, will you indulge me?
Thank you. I am very, very, very pleased about where we've ended up. And I think that it's important for us to step back and look at what we've done over the last few days and to step above all of our discussions. You know, every one of us has won some and lost some in all of this. But overall, we've crafted a story, a tool, a document for the city, which does a number of really exciting things. It invests very highly in public transit. It preserves the social safety net, particularly for those who are mobility impaired. We've gotten rid of a much-hated fee. We have invested strongly in the things that Calgarians have told us are important, and we've started the process of delivering municipal services to them in a much more effective and efficient way. And we've done it all for less than $5 a month. And I'm happy about that. I'm happy where we ended up. This is the first in a long, a long journey of how we transform, how we deliver services, how we transform, how we support Calgarians in achieving the quality of life that they want and they need in this city. But what I'm most happy about is the way in which we did it. I think that we have had several days of thoughtful, respectful engagement amongst all of us around this table, with our general managers and our leadership, in order to move us forward. And I'm very pleased about that. I'm new to this, but I've sat on the other side of that bar watching this in the past, and it feels different. And members of council have told me that it feels different for you as well, in terms of the way in which we move forward. And I'm very, very pleased about that. So thank you all for setting aside your partisanship, for taking off your hats and rolling up your sleeves and really sitting down to be able to work together to craft this story, which is so good for all Calgarians. So thank you all for that. And I'll echo what Alderman Colliercard said. I want to thank our leadership and all of the people that work for you for their willingness to engage on this, for their willingness to come to the table honestly and frankly in talking about how we can do things better. And I want to preserve a special thanks for the folks at City Clerks. I'm sure that I made your head spin around a lot this week. But thank you for being flexible and allowing us to move forward on this in a way that I am very, very, very pleased with. I hope that you'll all find it in your hearts to support the work that we've done together and to move forward. Keeping in mind that there's still a little more work to done. We've still got the carnival to come. There'll be popcorn, right, Mr. Tobert? At Tax Rate Bylaw. But overall, I want to thank you all for all the work you've done, and I do hope that you will support this. Alderman Lowe to close.
Well, I, I'm still going to stand and talk for a minute, and somebody's pool is going to change here. So that's fine. Your worship, a lot of good things said around here. The day's on.
Oh, the timer.
Oh, the timer. The, one of these guys is running a pool, too. The, a lot of good things said around here. I guess the most remarkable thing that always comes out of these budget processes to me is that we, at the end of the day, provide service. I'm very pleased about the results around transit. And we balance our budget. Alderman Colliercard pointed it out, that the stark difference between ourselves and other orders of government is we have no choice. We must balance our budget. is we have no choice. We must balance our budget, and we must provide transit, we must fire, provide police and fire, and we must do all of those things. We don't get the option of not building, be it a school or a hospital. We have to do it, and we do. Alderman Demong, the, the issue of where the tax rate sits nationally is really unimportant compared to the level of services that we provide to Calgarians. It's my experience that Calgarians demand and get superlative service at a reasonable cost. And I think we're, we always tread that line very carefully between being frugal and simply being cheap. And I think we do a very, very, very good job, and I'd like to thank our administration for pitching in and working this way. I'd particularly like to thank Mr. Sawyer and his staff for the last three years. It's been an interesting three years, and we have another interesting three years coming up and some distinct challenges as we go ahead. On that, council, I'll ask, ask your support for the budget. And for those who are watching the clock, closed.
Thanks, Alderman Low. Alderman Farrell, is this a motion arising? Okay. So then, on the motion you see before you, to adopt the 2011 operating and capital budget and business plans as amended, subject to further, yes, you want a recorded vote? Subject to further reports and amendments being adopted prior to the tax rate bylaw being adopted by council in 2011 April. I've been asked for a recorded vote. I can't actually vote because I left my pad over there. Oh, I got another one.
Alderman Curra for, Alderman Collier-Cott for, Alderman Chabot for, Alderman Demong against, Alderman McLeod for, Alderman Low for, Alderman Putmans for, Alderman Keating for, Alderman Stevenson for, Alderman Jones for, Alderman Pinkott for, Mayor Nancy for. That's carried, Your Worship.
And folks, we have a budget. So thank you all. Hey, no displays, and it's in the procedure by law. And we do, we're not done, though, folks. We're not done. We do have, we do have a number of motions arising. I have one as well, but we'll start with Alderman Farrell, then Alderman Low, then maybe me. Oh, no, that one's already done, so you can go before that. All right, Alderman Farrell.
Okay, thank you. I'll wait till it goes up on the screen. Or maybe I'll start reading it now. Direct administration to bring to the March meeting of council a report which details the best opportunities to provide counsel. Ooh, I've sort of doubled up on this one, I'm sorry. With details on the operating costs implicit in the approval of new growth, both commercial and residential. And what I'm asking for, in a kind of muddled way, is, we've been talking a lot about whether growth is paying for itself. We've been talking about capital costs of growth, which we've got a report coming in January with our new UDI agreement. But what this is about is the operating cost of growth. We've heard about our fire halls, it, it's the rolling out of communities, whether we're doing it in the most efficient manner, and, and if that is a burden on, on Calgarians. So I don't really know the answers to this, and I think some of us maybe have a feeling that growth isn't paying for itself in an operating, in the operating budget. But some of that information may be apocryphal. I'm not, I'm not certain. I think we need to know. And we also need to know if there's a better way of, of growing and whether it's, there's a better way of rolling out communities. So I think this information is important as we talk about doing things differently. I'll sit down and-
Thanks, Alderman Farrell. Do you mind if we change the March meeting of council to a March meeting of council? I know we don't have dates yet, but. Thank you. Do I have a seconder for that? Alderman Collier-Cart, thank you. On this motion, Alderman Chabot.
Thank you, Worship. And so what I need to know from administration is how they envision this, because I've had an instance in my area where an infill development has triggered the need to increase the, the water servicing and the sewage servicing. So if we're talking about new growth, are we just talking about new greenfield developments? Or how does administration view this motion? Are we looking at any, any new developments, whether it be inner-city or in the suburbs?
Mr. Tober, continue.
Your Worship, good question. I think that the administration has been working for some time on understanding the implications of growth, and you've heard us talk about one of the biggest risks facing the corporation is this continued growth. And so we have made a lot of progress on understanding what the costs are, both capital and operating. And I believe what this notice of motion does is says to the administration, bring a report back and tell us when you can make this information available as part of the development approval process. So think about the development approval process, and what's the right time to advise council of when it is we, you need that information to help make decisions. So that's the intent of what I believe the, the motion says, and we can do that very easily.
And so if, if I may indulge you a little bit, Mr. Tober, while you're standing, if we're looking at re, doing some area redevelopment plans as an example, and, and it looks at, at increasing intensification within an existing community, is that the point whereby you see that it might trigger the need to look at the costs associated with redevelopment of that area, whether it be for capital and/or operational as well?
You ask a question that's outside, I believe, the scope of the notice of motion, because this talks about new growth, not redevelopment.
Yeah, that's my point, Your Worship. I, I just wonder at what point we're going to look at that as well, and whether or not that could be incorporated in this, or is that too, too large of a, or too complex of an issue to address through this, this mechanism?
Um, Your Worship, I believe we are quite a ways down the road on this particular topic, so I would suggest that perhaps it's easier to take this thing one bite at a time. Let's try this the first bite.
Okay, thank you, Worship. I, although I don't see this as being necessarily a bad thing, I, I would like to see this maybe morph into maybe a new agreement with UDI in regards to the overall costs and whether or not some of the transportation costs that are associated with a particular area that are not required, whether or not they can be transitioned into other business units, because as it stands, Mr. Tober?
We are struggling to achieve an agreement with UDI based on the instructions that we got from council. I, I think what you're suggesting is, is quite a bit different than the instructions that we have from council at the moment. It would take new direction from council, and it would actually expand quite a bit of the discussions with the UDI, because they're very clear to us. They want transparency in what the money is taken and what it's spent on. And to think about transferring it to other departments, we would have to really be clear about what it is we're taking it for at the very beginning.
So this is strictly from an operational perspective?
This is operating funds.
I think we should also be looking at operating funds, not just in the outskirts, but also internally, because there is certainly going to be some additional costs associated with increased intensity in the inner-city as well. So I, I'll probably do something as a, maybe a, a new notice of motion or something to address that issue. Thank you, Worship. I will support this.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Chabot. You, you raised, I think, some very important points. Alderman Curra?
Thank you, Your Worship. I also, I'm, I'm, I'm actually struggling with this in, in a similar way to Alderman Chabot. I mean, I think this is a question about greenfield growth, right? Or new growth? And are, are we using those terms synonymously? I mean, are, are they, are they synonymous? New growth and, and greenfield growth? Mr. Tober?
Question for you. How do you envision it?
I think it could be interpreted in a very broad way. What I'm asking for is, what are the best opportunities to provide counsel with the details on this one? I don't anticipate it will come all at once, but it's something that we've been discussing for many, many years. And in the meantime, we've been growing and growing without a full understanding of the implications. What I'm asking for is a mechanism to understand the implications, whether it comes at once, or, and if it's identified that redevelopment, there's a cost that's not paying for itself, I think we need to know that as well. I'm not presupposing the outcome here. So I, it's very wide open, frankly.
So it's wide open. So you're thinking of greenfield, brownfield, growth, and, and perhaps even on the next step, growth in existing communities?
Yes, and I'm, what I'm asking for is the mechanism to inform council, not the information-
Gotcha.
-come March.
So Alderman Farrell, I, I'm going to have to propose a couple of amendments, and hopefully they can be friendly amendments. The first one is, I think, new growth almost-
Just say growth.
Yeah, can we just say growth? Can we get rid of new? And just, what this is about is the cost of growth. And then the other thing I'm having issues with is both commercial and residential. And I think what we're talking about in the MDP and what we're contemplating is a form of growth that is both commercial and residential at the same time. So calling those things out as separate sort of presupposes a style of growth that maybe we're attempting to move away from. And if we can just say of growth, period, I would be comfortable-
Alderman Farrell?
I, I really don't mind that if, if it's understood that it require, I'm talking about all growth.
I, I, I think, I think, I think, I'm flex. I think, I see it as inclusive rather than exclusive, the way it's written now, but I think it's clear what you're aiming for either way.
Is it clear, Mr. Watson? You'd likely be doing this with Dr. Hagerheimer and Mr. Logan. Oh, everyone, yes.
If you get five nods.
Is that fine?
So where are we right now? Because I'm not sure I follow-
She's happy to remove the stuff after growth.
I'm fine.
The rest of it after growth, yeah. Because I mean, and I will continue to, to hammer away at this.
Oh, yes.
You know, is that we have to move away from conceptualizing the growth of our city hods of residential and commercial and industrial use, and instead view it as how are we growing the habitat in which we all live. And I think sustainable habitat involves commercial and residential integrated, I think, at, at the neighborhood level. And so I, you know, I think the neighborhood's the basic building block, and the neighborhood is both commercial and residential, and ideally sensibly adjacent to industrial. And we have to talk about that, and, and maybe juxtapose it with some of the other forms of growth that we pursue in recently. But I will be happy to support the motion as it's currently friendly amended, friendally amended.
Thanks, Alderman Curra. Anyone else before Alderman Farrell to close? Alderman Farrell to close. Closed? Oh, the first time. Thank you, Alderman Farrell. On this motion, are we agreed? Any opposed? Carried. Alderman Low.
Thank you, Worship. Madam Clerk, you have the motion. You put it up. Your Worship, this builds on several conversations you've had and you and I have had. It also builds on a conversation we had this morning, actually, Mr. Tober, talking about a review of core services. So what, what I've done here, Your Worship, is acknowledged the work we've done over the last three or four days, and suggesting that council undertake a facilitated review of core services for the purpose of confirming with Calgarians of all walks of life. And it's very important of that. Those services deemed to be core to the objective of creating a great city for all. I've put, suggested a governance system, that a steering committee chaired by yourself comprising the chair of the chairs of four standing policy committees and the chair of audit, and the city manager oversee the conduct of the review, that council approve or withdraw about $2.6 million from the Innovation Fund, which we just approved, for the purpose of conducting the review, and that the steering committee report to council with its findings and recommending, recommendations not later than the first of April. Your Worship, my suggestion broadly speaking is we take the first 100 days of 2011, consult widely and thoroughly, and look at what Calgarians see as being core services. And then we use that as a building block to move forward with the transformal, transformative change that we keep talking about here. And if it means removing core services, it may well. It may mean adding some or altering the priority of some as we go. The way I envision this proceeding, the BPBC group are already have a request for RFP out there to start a consultation process for the next budget, that we build on that, and that add to it as necessary to get the information that we have. Further, by the steering committee I did with Mel's forethought is that really reflects PAC. So there's a meeting opportunity on a regular basis to oversee what we're, see what we're doing. That's also a meeting, Your Worship, where every member of council can come to and participate if they wish.
If we make it a PAC meeting?
If we, if it occurs at PAC. And even if we don't do it at PAC, I would suggest we open it up, and those members of councils who wish to attend are able to do so. So it's there for your consideration, council. It's, I think, a way of starting out the next budget cycle by looking hard at what we do and what those services, what services we see as being core. Thank you. Do I have a seconder?
Do I have a seconder? Alderman Demong. Alderman Low, can I ask you for one small change, see what you think of it?
Mm-hmm.
I, I can see some furrowed brows around the table regarding timeline. In the fourth one, can we stick in the word initial with its initial findings and recommendations so that we have the ability to push it forward if we need to?
Then that's absolutely fine, Your Worship.
Okay. So with its initial findings and recommendations. Okay, Alderman Demong, okay with you? Okay. All right, then, Alderman Pinkott.
Lots of work there. It's not a tiny piece of work. I sort of look at you, us trying to, developing, I mean, developing an engagement plan, and the tools is underway, and, and understanding and figuring. One of the challenges with engagement, it isn't just about asking. It's actually more important is, is about going, okay, so now that you've asked, what are you, how are you going to actually reflect back to people that you've heard them, and how are you going to say, and this is what, what we can and are going to do with what we've heard, and this, of this piece of what we've heard, this is what we can't do? Because we've got to actually develop that, that, engagement isn't just about saying, what do you think? It's about having that conversation and saying, yes, I heard you, and of this part, we're not, we, we can't or we're not going to do that for whatever reason. I, this is, this is, I think this is a, a great and worthwhile project. April 1st, I, I think we'll just be nibbling at the edges of what it could look like by April 1st. If we want to do it meaningfully, if we're setting out that we're going to have a final report, or even we're going to have some kind of findings from Calgarians of all walks of life by April 1st, I would be concerned that we wouldn't even be undertaking a meaningful exercise. It must be meaningful. So I have, I, I just, I don't want to set up expectations, expectations for council and expectations for the public that, at the end of the day, are not going to be meaningful. So that's my sort of caveat on all of this, caveat on timelines- So that's my sort of caveat on all of this, caveat on timelines, caveat on we've got to think about how we do this very, very carefully, because it isn't as simple as sending up a Twitter and going, hey, let us know with this hashtag what you think. It's got to be meaningful. The other, the other aspect of this, and I, I think I alluded to it in our budget conversation, and I certainly know this in my first three years of being on council and conversations I've had with administration, is that we've got a resource at our disposal that goes untapped regularly. And that is the 14,000 people who work with us, who are committed to this city and the betterment of this city every day. And I would love to make sure that they are included in the all Calgarians as a, as a, as a clear group, and not just as sort of one of the Calgarians. These are people who know how, who know about core services better than probably everybody except for six of us in the room. They know what core services are. They understand, they deal, you know? We make, we make a decision around a core service, saying the snow clearing and clearing of residential streets is going to be a core service? We make that decision in this room? Well, you know what? It's the snowplow driver who gets chased down the street, saying, you just plowed in my car, who actually has to deal with that core service, and the results of us making the decision that that's a core service. So we need to make sure that we include administration in this. And I use that as an example because it just happened two days ago. So I think this is, I think this is great. I just throw out that caveat that we cannot set up expectations without carefully thinking through how we are going to deliver on those expectations. And I don't even know if saying "initial findings and recommendations" by April 1st, I, April 1st, we might actually have how we're going to do it.
As long as we report something.
We've got to report something. I, and so I'll ask the mover. By initial findings, maybe he can address this in his close, or whether, as to exactly what the anticipated initial findings are, whether that's initial findings from a million Calgarians, or that's just, that, it's, I'm down to those two words, aren't I?
I think we got it, Alderman Pincott. We understand your concern. Thanks. I think Mr. Tobert did actually want to address that.
If I could, your worship, thank you. I don't think members of council, all members of council are aware that substantial work has been done already on engaging communication resources to undertake a review much like this, but associated with the business planning process for 12 to 14. So if it, though it's not explicit in the motion, there is an effort underway that could crib entirely into what work is already underway, and we probably could provide something substantive by the requested date. And I don't know if that's the mover's intention. By the nod, I guess it is. So there's already a ship going there, we just have to jump on board in time to get to the right port. So there's stuff underway that perhaps you weren't aware of. But it is still a huge task, huge piece of work, and we hadn't made sort of an even-handed approach to saying, are we making sure that we're going to be reviewing this with our employees to the same extent we do with our citizens? And we can certainly undertake that piece of work as well. Thank you, your worship.
Thanks, Mr. Tobert. Alderman Karah.
Thank you, your worship. Couple of points. First off, super exciting. This is exactly, exactly the kind of motion that we have to hit coming out of the gate based on the establishment of the Innovation Fund, and the promises we made during the election, and what we've been able to achieve through this budgetary exercise. So kudos to Alderman Low, Alderman Demong, and everybody, and administration for working on this. I'm, I'm super excited. In respect to Alderman Pincott's sort of concerns about the timeline, and sort of the whole sort of culture of managing expectations that surround that kind of discussion, I personally get very irate about the culture of managing expectations. You know, we want to manage our expectations, we don't want to, we don't want to promise something we can't deliver, we want to scale back. I actually think we want to actually go the opposite way. We want to create expectations and then force ourselves to actually achieve them. And that's sort of what a design exercise, that's what you learn as a designer, is that you just go, and you get there. Speaking to that, though, another thing coming out of a design exercise is that you want to not presuppose your outcome before you get there. And so I'm a little bit concerned with the two words, not timeline or initial findings, I'm concerned with the two words, core services. Because core services talks about what a corporation, it presupposes, I think, a frame of reference about what we do and what we are, that maybe we started to talk about. We talked about, are we a government? Or are we a corporation? Or are we both? Or what are we, and what are we doing? So the way I've looked at it, honestly, is that city government does two things. It establishes the situation whereby we grow, our habitat together, and then it deals with the management of that habitat. And I think that core services speaks to the second part of that proposition a little bit more heavily, and a little bit too sort of presupposingly than the first part of that. And so I'm, I would be very interested in maybe exploring a more open-ended approach to that core services, so we cannot presuppose an outcome, and we cannot... The final thing is, I just want to reiterate my support for Alderman Pincott's assertion that we have to include the experts. You know, when I was at the doors, I said that when you're dealing with the neighborhood, you have to work with the experts, and those are the people who live in those neighborhoods. And when you're dealing with organizational reform, in a huge bureaucracy like the city of Calgary, you have to work closely with the experts, and those are the people who work on a daily basis inside that organization. And, you know, I think that that's critical, and I think that has to be explicitly and implicitly part of this process. So I don't know, should I, can I, can I think about this and propose a motion maybe later after there's been a little bit more discussion? But I'm concerned about core services, and I would love to just...
You sure could, Alderman Karah, if you wanted to. I think that what you've said in my reading of the motion and in my discussion with the mover, I wouldn't be worried. I think it'll be broad enough that it'll, it'll match, it'll match what you're asking for, and you'll have the opportunity to...
Participate?
Participate as well.
Then I am comfortable.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Keating.
Thank you, your worship. I'm going to be just as brief as Alderman Karah was. I think this is absolutely...
He's got tomorrow in the pool.
I think this is absolutely necessary and essential, because that's exactly what we've been talking about for the last four days. I do want to emphasize the word innovative, and suggest things like Survey Monkeys and a number of different ways which we can get that feedback extremely fast. Thank you.
Thanks, Alderman Keating. Alderman Chabot, I was gonna say Alderman Karah, take note. Alderman Chabot.
Thank you, your worship. Well, I'm not too sure about this motion. I like the direction that it's going in. I'm just wondering about why we've allocated some money to something that we don't even know what exactly it's gonna entail. Should we not be undertaking a scoping review to start with, come back with findings of what it is that we all want to engage in, and get administration's feedback in regards to the work that they've already undertaken, before we actually allocate a specific number? Because that might be the right number, it might not be enough, it might be too much. I just, I'm not comfortable with allocating some money to something that I don't know what it's all gonna entail.
I think that the reason, Alderman Chabot, the reason the mover put in that up to in there, and put the city manager on the steering committee, was precisely so that we could move quickly while council's not meeting so much over the holiday break, to be able to make sure we've got the resources in place. So the steering committee, which you're, which you get to sit on, too, I think will manage it to make sure that the, whatever the draw is, makes sense. And if it turns out that we need much more than that, then of course we would have to come back to council.
Yeah. Like I said, whether I'm on that committee or not, it's not what's of concern to me right now. It's rather allocating some money without having direction from council to allocate those resources specifically for a purpose. I would prefer to see something come back to council before we start allocating specific resources for a specific purpose, before dedicating some money to it. So maybe, if I can just test council's will on this, by asking that we remove number three for now, subsequent to getting at least some initial direction from the committee to determine what the proper allocation would be in regards to finances. So my motion then would be to remove number three from this motion.
Do you have a second?
Would you be willing to just do a friendly amendment, consider approving a withdrawal?
Yeah, we can call them separately then. That's probably the right way to do it, Alderman Chabot.
To call it separately.
To call them separately.
Because I think it could, the rest could stand on its own, your worship.
Yeah, let's call them separately, and if your colleagues agree with you, then we'll move forward on that basis.
Okay. So just to, I guess, conclude in a debate perspective, while, while I, I don't disagree with the idea of trying to engage the general public and getting their ideas on what they consider to be core services, when I've undertaken similar type reviews in the past in regards to what my communities would like to see, from even just a community perspective, I get such a plethora of things that people think we should be providing as a municipality, including education and healthcare. So understanding what falls under municipal responsibility also forms a big part of the overall discussion. So while it's, it's not a bad undertaking to ask the general public what they think is proper core services, we have to bear in mind that there are things that we are legislatively obligated to provide, and there are things that fall under other orders of government's responsibility. So it's, it's gonna be a very difficult thing to try and temper insofar as input, and how to vet that information into something that's gonna be usable from a committee's perspective. So I, I support the idea of going out to the public. I'm more supportive of going to our own internal staff, who've been providing a lot of those core services, to provide us some guidance in regards to our overall objectives.
Thank you very much.
I'd still like to have you call them separately, though, your worship.
Will do, Alderman Chabot, thank you. Alderman Farrell.
Thank you. I'm, I'm not clear on the, getting a little note here, I'm sorry.
If you want to insert that, his worship suggests that it's not necessary. And this would take a long time to sort of go...
Okay, I'm, I'm just, Alderman Low, in your close, I would like you to confirm what you mean by core services. My initial response to that, or, is that we'd talk about fire, police, clean water, snow clearing, cemeteries. But I think we, I, I don't think that's what you mean by it. If you do, that worries me, because it would worry me that we'd turn into Pottersville. But what, and I think it's important when we talk to Calgarians about core services, is we may think police are, is a core service, and prevention is not. And yet, we've learned, of course, that it's far more efficient to prevent crime than it is to deal with crime after the fact. So you put your energy into prevention, and perhaps you can reduce your need for policing, which is far more costly. And that's what innovation is, really. And so I, another example is Olympic Plaza. We lost control of Olympic Plaza with a high rate of crime, to the point that average Calgarians would refuse to go down there. What we did is, rather than just put a police officer in there full-time, is we programmed it with arts and culture, things like laughing yoga and events. And some cities have done this by programming 360 days a year. But that I wouldn't consider in the traditional sense a core service, and yet what it's done is it's reduced the crime significantly, so we don't have to rely so heavily on policing this park that was once a place you would be afraid to go, and now has become the city's living room. So Alderman Low, please, in your close, if you could address that. Alderman Pincott mentioned the River of Light. That was one of the most delightful, stunning examples of public art that I have ever seen. And I bet you 30,000 to 40,000 Calgarians went out to see it. And, and yet I hope that's not what we're thinking of, of removing. I'm also concerned about removing, or using up, $2.5 million of our very small Innovation Fund for this. And I'm wondering if it shouldn't just come out of FSR.
Well, you know, we can all, on that particular question, if we exhaust the Innovation Fund, we can ask for more later, but this was the purpose for the fund, so...
Is to identify a fund. And that was the purpose, was really to have a fund identified. Okay, I'm fine with that.
Before you sit down, Alderman Farrell.
Yes.
I was just, glancing at the note that Alderman Karah sent me...
I couldn't read it.
If we just added the words, I'm just asking you a question. If we were to add the words in number one, "a facilitated review of the municipality's purpose and core services," would that help you?
Of our municipality's purpose.
Our municipalities.
Yeah, I think...
And I'm sure Alderman Low would be fine with that.
He's nodding.
So why don't we just add "a facilitated review of our municipality's purpose and core services"?
Yes, that would be great. And creating a great city helped resolve it for me, but I think that would make it more clear.
Can we squeeze one more word in there?
Will it make a difference, Alderman Karah?
I think...
Your worship, have we got that right before we move on?
Our municipality's purpose, purpose and core services.
I think we don't, I don't think it's necessary.
Yeah, and there should be a, there should be a apostrophe after "our municipality, Y, apostrophe S." Okay.
Yes, that, that helps. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, while they're fixing that, Alderman Marr.
Thank you. My turn to pontificate.
Alderman Marr.
I know, because you, I'm just...
You don't want to come back after lunch and there's another motion?
They wanted to make sure that you lost the pool again. Okay, no, I just have an amendment, and it's basically for number four, which is the steering committee reports to council with its initial findings and recommendations no later than April. There's, I don't think that's enough time. I would suggest June. No later than gives us the flexibility to come back in April, if there's time, but I would suggest June.
Alderman Low.
Your worship.
That's to close, or?
Not to close, just on what he just said. Are you gonna accept it?
We're into the business planning process now for the next three-year cycle.
Yes.
So we need a fairly early date for at least the initial findings and recommendations, if that body of, body of work is to continue, because this one feeds that one.
Okay, Alderman Marr, do you want to put it as a formal amendment?
I do want to put it for, as a formal amendment.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
To change April to June.
Because I don't think there's enough time.
Okay. Alderman Hodges has seconded, so on the amendment, Alderman Marr.
Well, I would just want to speak to that just a little bit. I appreciate that what we want to do is be as fast as we can. However, it's been my experience here, in my three and a little bit years, it is better to go slow to go fast. If we're talking about having a meaningful engagement with citizens of Calgary, if we're talking about doing a Ways and Means Committee, which is essentially what this is, then we need to be able to do it in a meaningful way. We need to be able to address Calgarians in a meaningful way. And again, as, as much as it's fun to use social media and things of that nature, we really need to have some open houses. We need to actually connect with Calgarians. If we're talking about all ages, and we're all walks of life, seniors, for the most part, do not use social media. We need to be able to go out... We need to be able to go out there, talk to Calgarians in a meaningful way. In order to do that, we need time. Thank you.
Thanks, Alderman Marr. On the amendment, Alderman McLeod? No? Anyone else on the amendment? Do you want to close, Alderman Marr?
Closed.
Thank you. On this amendment, which is to change April to June, are we agreed?
Agreed.
Opposed? Call the roll, please.
Alderman Demong.
No.
Alderman Farrell.
Yes.
Alderman Hodges.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Keating.
No.
Alderman Low.
No.
Alderman McLeod.
Yes.
Alderman Marr.
Yes.
Alderman Pincott.
Go with the edges, Brian.
Alderman Putmans.
No.
Alderman Stevenson.
No.
Alderman Carr.
No.
Alderman Chabot.
Yes.
Alderman Collier-Cott. Oh, sorry, your worship. Mayor Nenshi.
No.
Lost, your worship.
Thank you. Alderman, unless there's anyone else, Alderman Low to close on the main motion.
Well, thank you, your worship. And thank you, council. It's, I'm not surprised at the response because this is a huge piece of work and as Mr. Tobert pointed out, it's already underway. So, we have a body of work out there that we can hook onto and to achieve it. It is a huge amount of work to achieve by the end of April. But looking forward to developing the next budget or budget cycle, this body of information will feed that. And it's essential, in my mind, that we at least have an initial report and findings by April so that that body of work can continue and progress. Alderman Farrell, with respect to your concerns about core services. Policing is a core service, but policing can be defined in many, many ways, including programming of, you know, it's the Saptad concept. You know, can you do other things to achieve the end? So, if you look at each thing in as broad a scope as you can, you can embrace all of the, many, many areas into it. When I said, I said, use the phrase "Calgarians of all walks of life" with malice aforethought because that includes seniors, it includes immigrants, it includes the development industry. It includes a group of people who we rarely hear from, which are the corporations down the street, who we should be hearing from. We hear from, our employees are absolutely critical because you're absolutely right. They're the people who deliver those services and who've got firsthand information on whether they work and how they work. Reporting back, Alderman Pincott, I would expect that as our findings come out, they're made public and that becomes a vehicle through which we report back or build further engagement So, it is a large body of work, but if in fact we are serious about the change that we want to affect, we've got to start it now. And we have to have some markers along the way, particularly because one year from now, it would be my goal to be standing here and have just moved approval of the next three-year budget cycle with a lot of change.
363 days from now because we'll do it in only one day.
Not for not the first three years, your worship. I always say three hours for the budget adjustment days in the second and third year and I've always been wrong. So, but anyhow, that's how this all ties together. And this is really the beginning of a very large and very complex body of work. So, I'd ask for your support.
Thanks, Alderman Low. We're going to take them separately as per Alderman Chabot. So, on number one, are we agreed? Any opposed? On number two, are we agreed? Any opposed? On number three, are we agreed? Any opposed? Alderman Chabot is opposed. And on number four, are we agreed? Carried. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Any opposed? I see Alderman Hodges and Alderman Marr. Anyone else? All right. Oh, call the roll, please. This is on number four only, folks.
Alderman Demong. Alderman Farrell.
Yes.
Alderman Hodges. Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Keating.
Yes.
Alderman Low. Alderman McLeod.
Yes.
Alderman Marr.
No.
Alderman Pincott.
Yes.
Alderman Putmans.
Yes.
Alderman Stevenson.
Yes.
Alderman Carr.
Yes.
Alderman Chabot.
Oh.
Mayor Nenshi.
Yes.
It's carried, your worship.
Thank you very much. Alderman Marr. I have one last motion for me. There are actually five separate things in this motion. I think the clerk will get it up in a moment. This is an omnibus motion with a number of other things reflecting what some members of council have asked about throughout this debate but did not feel were things that we wanted to make changes to the actual budget. So, what they are are a number of requested reports and one clarification on a particular fund. These are funds that have nothing to do with the mill rate. The first is the request for a full business case and work plan for the $11 million project for e-services in planning, development, and assessment. The second is the clarification. Dr. Hargisheimer and I have gone back and forth on this one. So, it's just a simple clarification of practice that a fund called the Event Stimulus Program that organizations applying for that fund may use the money in 2012 for festival programming. It wasn't entirely clear if they could. Number three is a full report on IT capital requirements and the number of different IT growth funds, IT capital funds. Number four is a similar report, sorry, Mr. Stevens, on the capital requirements of customer service and communications. And number five is a report to better understand how all of the city's communications activities are in various departments, how the budget has grown over time and how it has changed given the changes in the media landscape. That's a lot. And I'm happy to take them all separately.
Do you have a hard copy that...
I, we can probably do that.
Rather than trying to read...
Madam Clerk, is that possible? All of this on screen?
Madam Clerk, can we do that?
We'll have to get the...
All right, I've got a hard copy here if you want a copy. And I can hand it over to you if you like, Alderman Pincott.
We're not going to make new...
Hmm?
We're not going to make new, mate.
We still might, but we can talk about them anyway. So, what these... Hmm? Well, let's see if we can finish before then. The... So, in any case, the one thing about these are, these are pretty aggressive timelines and Mr. Tobert, but some of the work has already been done. So, Mr. Tobert and I banged our heads together for just a second and agreed that these aggressive timelines are probably okay, but council should be aware that if on one or two of them they slip, they may come and ask for an extension, a deferral, we call that. So, in any case, like I say, I'm sorry to put all five of them together and I'm happy to vote on them separately, but these are the five things that cropped up in my discussions with members of the public and council that don't have to do with the mill rate but where more information was requested.
Thank you, Mayor Nenshi. I will call them separately, given that this is, well, there seems to be some debate on this right now. And Alderman Low, you're first.
Do you have a seconder, your worship?
Is there a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Carr, Alderman Low.
Yeah, the only question I have was the timelines. Those are fairly big pieces of work with a very tight timeline compression along them. And I know administration is... I'm trying to find some words that sort of say they're becoming gun-shy of deferrals. When I think in this case, Mr. Tobert, there may be good reason to defer it a month or so. And I'd just like some language or at least some understanding in here that we're not going to hang anybody for deferring. I mean, there's a monstrous amount of work in each and every one of those. Mr. Tobert?
Mr. Tobert, when the mayor showed it to me this morning after I picked myself up off the floor, I said, "Look, you've got very aggressive timelines and I'd probably like a week to consult with the GMs to see what a better timeline was." But he was hell-bent for leather to make the motion today. So, I said, "Fine, make the motion, but be aware that we will bring deferral reports in." Because I can't just sit here and say, "Well, this is going to take this." There needs to be some consultation. So, I said, "Be aware," and he did mention it in his open, "that we were going to ask for deferrals. We may be gun-shy, but not with this one."
No, I appreciate that. And so long as there's a very clear understanding that there will be deferrals in here, I have no difficulty with it. Thank you.
Sorry, I was just consulting with the city manager gentleman. On the motion, Alderman Chabot.
Thank you, your worship. So, Mr. Tobert, if you can maybe help me to understand what you perceive out of recommendation number five because I've had a chance to talk to our person in charge of communications, but I also found out through that discussion that each business unit has their own communications budget over and above the printed communications piece that our centrally-located communications department has their budget, but each individual department also has their own communications budget. So, is this looking at the combined piece of all of the business units as well as the communications group?
Your worship, Alderman Chabot asks a great question because as he indicated, there is a fair amount of money distributed within each individual business to do communications work. And so, to do this right, you do need to encompass both pieces.
So, that's what you envision this as being. Thank you for that answer. It's, like you said before, this sounds like a very arduous and time-consuming work and I'm not sure whether or not these timelines will be achievable, but I do anticipate that you will be coming forward with some deferral requests if you can't meet those timelines. So, I'll support it on that basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Chabot. On the motion, Alderman Farrell.
Quick question. There must be some cost to this. And does that need to be put in the budget?
Mr. Tobert?
There is a cost to every report, council.
There is a process under the procedures bylaw where administrative inquiries can be priced and brought back to council, but I was too timid to suggest that.
No, but I'm asking though. There, we can try and suck blood out of a stone, but there's a cost associated. So, do we need to quantify that?
Your worship, I can't do that now. I can't, I can't do that now.
So, when they report back? This isn't part of the two and a half million.
Did they come back?
Mr. Tobert, we cannot approve...
In a vacuum.
Yeah. We can pretend things don't cost money, but they do. So, let's get it on the table here. I know you can't give us a number. When could you give us a number? Could you report back? I'm not, I don't want to refer this.
The next meeting of council is Monday and that's too soon.
That's too soon.
So, as soon as it could be would be the week after.
So, could there be a number six then that report back to council on... I don't want to date.
Your worship, this, you're asking for what I would like? This is really about what council would like.
I'm asking your advice, Mr. I...
Well, here's what I would suggest is you refer the whole thing to the administration to bring back a report in the second meeting in December at which time we can price these. I'm sorry.
Is that all right?
He can't make motions.
Alderman Farrell?
Yes.
Number two, one, three, four, and five. Number two, we can just...
That's fine. So, one, three, four, and five, is that fine? I think it's important that we attach costs to work requests. Thank you.
Right. On the motion, Alderman Pincott. Sorry, we have a motion to refer.
This is a motion to refer and I'm just going to, to speak to that. I was actually going to move that we actually table it to December 13th so that we could come back with realistic timelines as well as cost. So, I would, as part of the referral motion, I hope that not only do we get some idea of what it would cost, but what realistic timelines are. I do not want to set administration up for failure.
Yes. All right. Anyone else to speak to that? We have a referral motion. On the motion to refer, are we agreed?
Agreed.
Are there any opposed? That's carried. On number, we still have to call number two. On number two, that council confirmed the funds for Event Stimulus Program, are we agreed?
Agreed.
Are there any opposed? Alderman Chabot is opposed. That's carried. Thank you.
Are there any other motions arising or other business in this meeting? Alderman Hodges, I will accept the motion to adjourn. Seconder, Alderman Jones, are we agreed? We're done. You can clap now.